All right, we'll call to order the Thursday, August 7th Planning Commission. If we can start with roll call.
Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Simcock.
Here.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Commissioner Yu.
Here.
And Commissioner Moran asked to be excused. Chair, you have the court for this meeting.
Thank you. First up is the approval of agenda. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes of the July 17th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Were there any proposed edits?
I have a proposed edit on line, in the, in the section regarding the minor variance approval, 25-01. I believe it's referring to actually the prior section of the agenda, so it needs to be reread. So line 70 says Commissioner Brennan made, Commissioner Brennan made a motion to approve the agenda as modified, should read Commissioner Brennan, Brennan made a motion to approve minor variance 25-01. And then line 80 and 81 should read the motion to approve minor variance 25-01 is not as modified. To approve minor variance 25-01 was approved by unanimous vote by all commissioners present. So if we want to make those modifications, if we can approve with those modifications, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those modifications noted.
A second.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Minutes, sorry, the minutes, I was referring to the agenda.
As the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Commissioner Yu. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next up is the council liaison report. From a council member who should be somewhere else.
I just got back from Hawaii last night, so I'm back at it. I don't have much to report to the commission for Tarka until the 26th. But in case you didn't know, it was a front page article in the LA Times yesterday about our fair issue. Very extensive article I was interviewed in. I can attest to at least the parts that I was interviewed in were accurate, and I think she did a fair job, which is kind of unusual for the press. But I think it's, well, hopefully if people are watching, it's a good place to start to get information about some of the things that are going on, things that we're doing on city council, and maybe doing on the city council and some of the issues with the state Fish and Wildlife Department. So if anyone hasn't seen, it's the front page, August 6th, LA Times. That's all I got. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, next up is community input. At this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Hearing no community input, we'll move up to our first public hearing. Certificate of appropriateness, CA 25-02 for the Twi Cross House circa 1915. Do we have a presentation from staff?
Yes, Chair, our senior planner Wolf will deliver the presentation.
Thank you Director Lynn, and good evening Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, the planning commission will be reviewing a proposed alteration to a designated historic landmark located at 123 South Baldwin Avenue, the Twi Cross House. This is a certificate of appropriateness request, which involves the demolition and reconstruction of a detached two-car garage in a new location with a reconfigured driveway. That reconfigured driveway also includes new surface material, and also proposed as a new fence material. 123 South Baldwin Avenue is situated along the west side of South Baldwin Avenue, just south of Esperanza and near the west terminus of Lowell Avenue. Property is within the residential high-density land use designation and is within the R313 zone, being for multifamily development of up to 13 dwelling units per acre. And the property is also within the residential entrepreneur overlay. Garage proposed for demolition currently straddles a property line shared by parcel 34 and 35. As you see outlined in red is the garage on screen there. It's, I'm circling that right now. The garage was built after the original construction of the Twi Cross House, as evidenced by the sandborne fire insurance maps, which denote a single car parking structure fully within the property and not straddling any property line. Now what can clearly be seen is a two-car garage. It employs a ribbon coursing wood shingle extending from the ground up to the roof line, and exposed wood beams and rafter tails, which you can see from the detailed photo, are deteriorating. The gable ends include rectangular louvered attic vents. The front has paneled tilt-up wood double garage door with metal hardware, and there are also two small hopper windows on the backside of the garage, which you wouldn't really know were there unless you were standing behind or inside of the garage. From the north side picture, you will also notice that the roof is the same broiled asphalt material that was on the house and installed in the 1980s. Existing garage will be demolished and replaced with the new garage, reoriented to face north, and located behind the house. The new garage will conform to modern standards with a minimum interior clearance of 20 feet by 20 feet, and will be sited with a nine-foot, nine-inch side yard setback and an 18-foot, four-inch rear yard setback. The end of the driveway will be extended and aligned to the entrance of the new garage. There is a protected oak tree near the location of the new garage. This tree has been identified in an Arborist Report as having an estimated trunk size diameter of 15 inches and a canopy diameter of 12 feet. That canopy does not extend into the footprint of the new garage. Next to that oak tree is a larger dead tree that was not identified as a protected species and may be freely removed to accommodate the driveway. The new garage is not proposed as a reconstruction of the old garage, but as a replacement using modern techniques and incorporating craftsman elements. Siding employs a combination of stone paver-colored plinks and battened hardy panel between the top plate and the roof eaves of the gable ends, and staggered edge panel hardy shingles in the same color below the top plate. There's also a base course of stacked river rock around the perimeter of the garage, breaking for the doors, the door openings. Roof material is an asphalt shingle to match the roof material that was approved and installed on the house last year. This is the core of the request. So the driveway will need to be extended for access to the new garage. The current driveway is broken asphalt concrete. The applicant proposes resurfacing the entire driveway with the interlocking permeable paver sampled on the left side of this slide. A chip material is spread between the joints of the interlocking pavers that is designed to meet specifications for bioaquifer storm systems, allowing watershed to permeate the material and percolate below. The applicant also proposes a fence material, location nondescript, that is a dog-eared cedar plank. Wherever located, the height of the fence will be restricted to 42 inches in height, if placed within the front of the house, and is limited to six feet in height, placed anywhere else on the property. This restriction will be enforced through condition of approval number 2.4.3. These are materials proposed in addition to the core proposal. The commission may approve these materials as presented alongside the core request, or approve the request with modification that only the core request be approved, and either one of the materials, or none of these additional materials, is approved. If the commission does not approve the permeable paver for the driveway, the applicant will be required to use asphalt concrete in the new driveway area, in which case it will increase lot coverage, but not by an amount that exceeds the allowable. In the evaluation for appropriateness, we look at the Secretary of the Interior standards. For the treatment of historic properties, there are 10 standards. I'll be focusing on standards two and three because they are most applicable to this project. Evaluation of the proposed project against all 10 standards was conducted by a qualified historian and is included in attachment B of the staff report. So for standard number two, the historic character of the property will be retained and reserved, preserved. The removal of distinctive materials or alteration of features, spaces, and spatial relationships that characterize a property will be avoided. We find that the garage is not character-defining feature, and it is not the main focal point of the property. The garage is not original to the property based on the sandborne fire insurance maps. It is recommended that materials from the garage be salvaged and incorporated into the new garage to the extent feasible, and this is incorporated as condition of approval On the third standard, it's that each property will be recognized as a physical record of its time, place, and use. Changes that create false sense of historical development, such as adding conjectural features or elements from other historic properties, will not be undertaken. We find that the new garage is not, will not detract from the property's use as a private residential parcel. Therefore, the property is able to remain as a physical record of its time, place, and use. It is recommended that the base course stone implement a stack pattern that is differentiated from that of the main house, and this will be enforced through condition of approval number 2.4.2. For approval of certificate of appropriateness, we need to make two findings. The first is with regard to a historic landmark, that the, that the proposed work will neither adversely affect the integrity of the significant architectural features, nor adversely affect the historic character or value of the historic landmark. We find that the existing detached two-car garage is not original, built as an addition to or replacement of the original parking structure, and therefore, the existing two-car garage is not of historic value to the property. And the second finding is that in the case of construction of a new improvement, addition, building, or structure upon a designated historic landmark site, the use and exterior of such improvement will not adversely affect, it will not, and will be compatible with the use and exterior of the historic landmark. We find that the new garage is necessary, I'm sorry, that the new garage is accessory to and consistent with residential uses. The new garage is located behind the house, and therefore, the Twi Cross House remains the primary feature of the property. We also have to conduct environmental review, but we look at the California Environmental Quality Act, and a project is categorically exempt from environmental review if any one of the following apply. We had found that there are three classes for exemption. The first is for existing facilities and a demolition of a garage. The next is for a class three, which is for the new, new construction of the garage. And lastly, it's class 31 for historical resource rehabilitation, which is for a project limited, limited to the rehabilitation of historical resources in a manner that is consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. Tonight, the commission may approve the application and issue a certificate of appropriateness for the project as presented pursuant to Planning Commission Resolution 25-11, or approve the application with modifications regarding the proposed surface material for the driveway end or fence material, or deny the application identifying the findings that cannot be made for approval and direct staff to prepare a resolution for denial, or continue the public hearing, providing direction to staff and the applicant. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the application and issue a certificate of appropriateness for the project as presented. That concludes my presentation tonight, and we do have the applicant and the architect here for any questions.
Any questions of staff?
I have one question for staff. That line, "The stone base course proposed for the new garage shall be designed with a stack pattern differentiated from the, that of the Twi Cross House." I'm not, I don't really understand what that is saying. Do you?
It just means that the, the stack pattern would have to be differentiated in such a way to denote it as a hyphenation of sorts, that it isn't a conjectural or original, it's not meant to be read as an original feature of, of the development, but rather, in addition to.
Part of the way that the code reads is that when you build stuff back on a historic site, you're not supposed to copy, or like make it look like it was part of the original. And so this is part of that differentiation that's required.
Okay, cool, thank you.
I did have a question, I'm sorry. Did anybody have a question? Condition of approval 2.4.1, we were asking them to keep or preserve materials that can be reused. If the purpose of getting rid of it is because it's rotten, what are we expecting them to reuse?
I did gloss over that in my presentation now that I think about it, but in the case that none of that would be feasible, they had proposed that, the hardy plank or the shingle siding. I don't know how much of that can be preserved, there's a lot of it that is rotten out. And perhaps the applicant might know more information about that.
Is that some boilerplate language that we just generally keep in these?
It was a recommendation by the historian that it would be, any materials possible should be salvaged and used within the new development.
Aren't a lot of those materials not up to today's code?
They might not be, but maybe the applicant might be able to elaborate on material of the siding that's currently there.
Okay, I guess I was leaning more towards if we're saying, you're okay to tear it down because it's not safe, why are we asking them to try to salvage stuff from it?
I don't believe there was any finding that it is unsafe.
Oh, okay. Part of the reason is that it's so old and it hasn't been maintained. I was just, is, that's why I was asking, if this is just default language that we say so that there's a preservation thought, that's one thing, but I didn't know if there was something specifically identified in here that caused the historian to say that, or if that's just what historians say.
I don't think there's anything specific for that reason, but I think it's more general application in this case, and it's to the extent feasible, so whether it's feasible or not is up to the applicant to determine.
Perfect.
In the choices that you gave, there was a one, two, three, and four. The first one was just the core of the house, and then the second one was regarding the paving and the fence. But staff's recommendation is the first one, not the second one.
That's correct.
Is there a reason for that?
We have no reason to find that there should be any reason to...
It's like a circular argument.
Deny the, the stone paving material and the fence material.
So you're saying it's okay, you're suggesting both, but you would say one versus the other?
Or? No, we're not suggesting one or the other, we're just saying that the commission has the options to say no to either of those secondary options.
Got it, I think. Okay, thanks.
If the applicant wishes to say anything, they're welcome to, there's no requirement to if you don't want to.
Yeah, just thank you for your time. I know we've, we've gone over this before, specifically just that we're, the architects also here if we have any questions on the design. I think the idea was that we really tried to follow the historic review, and as far as the recycling, I do believe the light fixtures, I would say, number one, would be, there's four of them that we would reuse, if, you know, the code allows us to, the building department. And then we will salvage, and you know, in today's world, we have to recycle majority of the material anyway, so it'll hopefully go somewhere that else, someone else can use it if, if we can't use it. But yeah, thank you. If you have any questions, just let us know.
Where's the fence going?
Well, and so perimeter, we don't really know exactly, the rear of that house is, have a block, one side is sort of falling down, the fence, it's there, we don't know if it's on the neighbor's yard, the other side has chain link, so we were kind of, sort of where Josh was going is we don't know, and if that's something you guys aren't comfortable with, we're good, we just wanted to get the material out there so that when we do design it and run it through the building, building, we have the materials already approved, and we don't, and again, that came from the historian, that, that cedar, dog-eared fence.
And the intention is it's a perimeter replacement of something that's existing?
Well, there's really nothing there right now.
There's nothing in the front.
Yeah, there's nothing in the front. And then the side is, then we believe, we're not really sure exactly if it's the neighbor's fence, and then the south side is chain link, right? So that's...
And the fence can't go past the house, right?
It goes, I think it's 20, oh Joshua, no.
Under the way, we have it for the conditions of approval, it may go within the front yard of the fence, but its height would be limited to 42 inches.
So that we can continue to see the historic house.
And it's the perimeter of the three lots together, not the perimeter of the center lot.
At this point, there is no plan. We're, all we're doing tonight is asking what material that we could use. That's really what you're looking at, because that, we just haven't gotten that far yet with any sort of plan.
And Commissioner, the, the historic property is just the one lot, not, not all three lots.
Okay. So it's just the middle lot?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
At this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning an item that, I'm sorry, any person may address the planning commission on this specific agendized item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Hearing no comments, we will bring it back to the commission for deliberation and start with ex parte visits.
I have been there in the past, but not in the last couple of weeks.
I drive it daily, so I'll pass you there.
I visited the site several weeks ago, but not in relation to this certificate of appropriateness.
Myself as well. All right, who wants to start?
I'll go. I, I have no issues with what they're proposing, I think it makes a lot of sense, it's tucked in the back, the materials seem appropriate, I think all the things that you went over seem appropriate for that. And I would be okay with approving the pavers and the fence. I, I'm a little hesitant on the fence, just because it seems like it would be much, you could do much better on the fence. Side and back, I don't think it matters, but if you're going to put anything in the front, I feel like it'd be nicer to have than just your typical-looking, you know, fence like that for the, for that kind of property. That, that would be my only suggestion, something nicer, but I'm okay with one or two for the approval.
I, I'm the same way, I, I have no problem, I, I'm not, I guess that fence material was suggested by the historian, it doesn't seem to fit to me, but I don't have any problem with it.
Seems cheap, that's all.
Yeah.
I, I would be, I would be comfortable approving the, the pavers themselves, obviously because they're permeable, et cetera, and the materials, I think it's a great addition. I think with, with the fence material, with some of those unknowns, I would feel more, I'd feel better not approving that tonight. That'd be my personal preference.
Do certificate of appropriateness get noticed?
They do not.
I mean, I guess the challenge is that we rely on those historical reports for so much, that if they say that that's one of the materials that is appropriate for the time, I guess, are we, I worry that we're setting a standard of picking and choosing what part of the report we're agreeing with.
That makes sense.
And the placement and location is not subject to any historical preservation oversight, I guess, since it's, since it's unknown? So can we clarify just from a historical preservation perspective, the lot, et cetera? Is the placement of the fence completely discretionary to the homeowner eventually? Is that subject to any oversight?
I, I think you'd said that it was the height in front, directly in front of the house?
The height, but, but other than that, just, so, so I mean, let me be extreme, so there could be a decision to run a fence right through the middle of the lot, I'm just asking an arbitrary question, but that, but that could be, that could be discretionary and left up to the homeowner, as long as the material and the height requirements were left, were, were, you know, to, to the requirements of the code.
To respond to your hypothetical, yes, that could happen. I suppose we could refine this further and say that would, it would be perimeter fence.
But if the purpose of a fence is to enclose the yard so you can have a dog, then perimeter fence is not sufficient, right? If you're just saying those three sides, or you're saying all the way around?
Leaving it open for the applicant to, to place within the perimeter, maybe we say within five feet of the property line.
Well, I guess, asking Commissioner Brennan's question another way, is there any code that governs the placement of the fence?
There is not. It may be placed within a setback area, that's, that's about it, but it's, it's more permissive than it is restrictive.
So we don't, it's really material that we get a say over, not the placement of the location?
Not necessarily, I, I think the commission might have jurisdiction to look at the location, and it might have to do with the setting of the historic property, so that might be a valid concern.
Does the applicant care, sorry, let me phrase that differently. Does the applicant object to coming back to show us where the fence is going to end up?
You can say no.
I mean, is it, I guess, is the question, I feel like the question's the material, everybody just went, I know...
I think the word, I...
I mean, so it's like, you know, the dog-eared thing, that's was just, that's just coming from...
Right, so if we get past the dog-eared thing, I think the second part of it was the placement of it?
Right.
Like, is it gonna, since you guys don't know the placement of it, are you okay coming back and saying, here's where it's going to end up?
No, I don't think that's an issue, I mean, I think, you know, so it, but I don't want to go through, I mean, I, do I have to go then through the whole, what is, is that, is that in a certificate again?
There, yeah, I, I think there might be some concern if, let me put another hypothetical out there, if any future owner wanted to use that approved material, but let's say, make a maze out of the front yard fencing at 42 inches in height, would that be appropriate to the setting of a residential use? That's in question right now.
To go back to my comment though, I, I don't want to restrict him and have him come back again to, for a fence plan and all this stuff, you know, I was just making a comment of, it would be nice to have a fence that is, you know, maybe a higher quality or nicer for the house that's there. That's all I was saying, I'm, I don't want to restrict him in what he can use and have him come back with a plan and all that, I don't want to do that, that's not my intent.
What if, what if we come back and can, can we leave it at the staff level to tell us, like Claire and Josh, to say that it's not Home Depot?
I'm, I'm actually okay with, if you want to use that, you could use that at your house, whatever it might be, but I just don't, you know, my suggestion would just be, it would be nice to have a nicer fence, that's all.
I'm on board, how's that? So.
So on my side of it, that's, I'm okay with that.
Okay. So I, I'm just, for the, so what I'm just trying to clarify is, it sounds like the commission, given that it's a historical property and we have our, our historical preservation code, there is some oversight over the placement of the fence, if I understood correctly.
It's a code, right?
Or...
It can go in a certain perimeter part, and when it gets to a certain part, it needs to be a certain height, and if it goes behind them, then it's a certain height, that's all.
No, I, I understand the height, but right now, there's no description from the applicant as to where the fence will be placed. So to, to Senior Planner Wolf's point earlier, potentially, or I would recommend that, that there's a stipulation that the fence should be a perimeter fence placed within a boundary that's appropriate. I believe you said there's some code that would stipulate it has to be a boundary fence, or, or within, or within the, or within the setback perimeter, if you...
What if they wanted to create a dog run within their fence, and there's another fence within, I mean, it's like, then we're mandating where the fences go inside their property.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to clarify our responsibilities as a planning commission and what the preservation code says. So if there's, if, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, but I thought I heard from Senior Planner Wolf that there is some stipulation here. If there's not, I'm okay. If, if there's nothing in the code that says that we have to do any, that we have any responsibility, that's fine. Then I, then I think the material's fine and we can move forward. But I'm not hearing, at least I'm not hearing that clearly, so maybe you can just elaborate a little bit.
I do believe that the design and the location of the fence is within the purview of the planning commission to consider, and this request is open-ended. So I do, I do believe it would be appropriate for the commission to respond by saying we would like to see the location of the fence come in for review.
So we can approve the material, but since we don't have a design, we can't approve a design or placement? Is that correct?
That is currently an option to the commission to just approve a material without approving the location, but that would then enable the applicant or successive owner to place their approved material fence wherever they please, as long as it's restricted to those height limitations.
Okay.
So putting in a fence today on a historical property is subject to a certificate of appropriateness? If, if, sorry, go ahead.
That is correct, if it is visible from the public view.
We don't want a fence, man. That's why we said it the way we did, is we'd like to just say, tonight, just approve the garage and the driveway, and we'll come back later.
Okay. All right.
Fair.
It sounds like we have a proposal for that. Were there any objections to the, to the permeable materials?
No.
I didn't think I heard any.
Not at all.
Great. So I will look for a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness as amended from the dais.
I'll make a motion to approve the, we have a certificate of appropriateness. That's the fence.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is municipal code text amendment MCTA 25-02, amending section 17.60.056, discretionary demolition permit of chapter 17.60, variances and discretionary permits of Title 17 zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Does city staff have a presentation?
This chair, so tonight is the public hearing, and we have a presentation delivered by Senior Planner Wolf.
Thank you Director Lynn, and good evening again Chair Dennison and Planning Commission. Tonight, we have a public hearing item for municipal code text amendment 2502 for the discretionary demolition permit ordinance update. The purpose of a discretionary demolition permit ordinance is to ensure that the potential historic resources are properly evaluated before they are altered or demolished. The eaten fire burned 750 acres of vegetated land, resulting ash, soot, and other harmful particulates infiltrated homes all throughout the city. Building alterations may be necessary to achieve full abatement of the damages. If necessary for structural, for structure built in 1950 or earlier, the discretionary demolition permit ordinance requires that potential historic resources be evaluated before any building alterations are permitted. Processing and approving a discretionary demolition permit may take at least five weeks. Issuing the building permit for an alteration might only take one day. Exception applies if the building is an imminent hazard where demolition is necessary to eliminate any threat to the health and safety of the public. To recap, on June 24th, 2025, the city council held a discussion and acknowledged the tension existing between wildfire preparation and historic preservation. Direction was given to staff to amend the discretionary demolition permit ordinance in the following ways. Provide exceptions for specific work, as allowed by separate resolution of the city council, for the sole purpose of home hardening or hazard particulates abatement. Explore common sense amendments that would make the process more efficient, such as allowing for the new fire resistant materials that maintain historical aesthetics. With certain limitations, provide exceptions for structures that have demonstrable record of exterior alterations since their original date of construction. Provide exception for any demolition that is both of the following. Not necessary to accommodate an addition or expansion, and not visible from public view. Explore providing exceptions for any structure that was built as part of a tract development. Explore providing categorical exemptions for certain structure types or building modification actions. And explore providing categorical exemptions for certain homes built during the post World War II housing boom. On July 17th, 2025, the planning commission reviewed a draft ordinance amendment prepared by staff and further discussed ways to meet the direction provided by city council. A subcommittee was formed to revise the draft ordinance amendment. Staff was directed to prepare an exhibit of building material replacements that would not be subject to discretionary demolition permit. On July 30th, 2025, the subcommittee convened to finalize and forward its draft ordinance amendment to staff for review. And on July 31st, 2025, staff met with the subcommittee to discuss the amendments and provide recommendations. Now, this is an overview of the proposed amendment. Now, this is an amendment to one section of our code, and so within that would be subsections. And we can review each subsection at a time in live edits after the presentation, but for now, I'm going to summarize the more substantive changes occurring, which you can see indicated, outlined in the outlined subsections. Also, I won't be summarizing changes in the order you see on screen. Instead, I will be jumping to different sections that flows better for this presentation. You can also follow along by reading the draft amendments by scanning the QR code on the right-hand side of the screen. So to start, we'll go over the definitions. The terms altered or demolished incorporate existing language. Construction date is the same as discussed from July 17th. New terms introduced by the subcommittee include fire hardening update. It means construction or replacement of existing materials within, with building materials used to resist the intrusion of flames or embers projected by a wildland fire on an existing structure. And preservation candidate, which at one point was potential historic resource, is a structure which was constructed 75 years or more prior to the date of the application for review. And some language that may have inadvertently stayed included was, or by way of historic resource appeals process, is pending a classification under California Historic Resource Code. And to simplify the applicability review, I just made this Venn diagram where you start, you figure out whether the structure is a preservation candidate or a potential historic resource, whichever term we land on. If it is not a preservation candidate, then a discretionary demolition permit does not apply. If it is a preservation candidate, then we ask the question, do any exceptions apply? If exception, if any one exception applies, then a discretionary demolition permit does not apply. But if no exceptions apply, then a discretionary demolition permit does apply.
Thank you for putting that together.
So to go over what exceptions are being added. First, demolition of a structure that is not visible from public view, as determined by the director. Next, demolition of a structure affecting well documented additions or alterations that are not original to the structure. Next, any proposed demolition of a structure on a property that was developed as part of a residential subdivision of land, creating five or more residential properties, and that was not the work of a notable architect or builder. Next, any proposed demolition for purposes of fire hardening update shall be subject to ministerial review by the director or their designated staff, as detailed in another subsection we'll go over later. Next, the director, in consultation with the city engineer, has provided a written determination that demolition is necessary to immediately abate an imminent hazard to public safety. Next, any proposed demolition of a home that is obvious to the director or their designated staff to not meet criteria on defined in subsection 17.82.050B, which is architectural criterion, shall be determined subject to the ministerial review, as detailed in another subsection. So that ministerial review process for exceptions seven and nine. So the first one is for fire hardening update. That exception will refer to an exhibit which will be adopted by the city council by resolution, then maintained and updated by the director as needed to provide exceptions for certain work, which would not be in kind replacement, but would be appropriate for both fire hardening updates and historic preservation. And for the next exception, number nine, is another exhibit would be adopted by the city council resolution, then maintained and updated by the director as needed to provide exceptions for those homes that were built en masse during the post World War II housing boom. And an exception has been eliminated. So any proposed demolition of a structure constructed less than 75 years from the date of application, which is subject to the provisions of a regular demolition permit. We didn't think this was necessary anymore because it was going to be screened out during the applicability review that we went over in that, that flow chart. Next, I'll be going over the public notice and comment. So public notice and comment for a project is subject to discretionary review. Sorry, public notice and comment is required for any project that is subject to discretionary demolition permit. Public notice follows established posting standards, except for when a discretionary demolition permit and its replacement development project require planning commission review at a public hearing. The staff recommendation tonight is for the planning commission to open the public hearing, consider all testimony, and continue consideration of its recommendation for the adoption of amendments, pending review of both of those exhibits, again for fire hardening updates and those common sense, common sense exceptions for those structures that were built in the post World War II housing boom. The planning commission tonight may approve municipal code text amendment, directing staff to prepare a resolution to that effect. They may approve the municipal code text amendment with amendment, with modifications, indicating the modification and directing staff to prepare that resolution, or continue consideration of the municipal code text amendment, providing direction to staff. That concludes my presentation for tonight. We can also open up for live edits. In the meantime, I'm also open for questions. Do you want to kind of give a background on what the subcommittee did?
Yeah.
Or I'm happy to.
Sure. No, I, so Chair Dennison and I met, you know, as the appointed subcommittee. We really broke down the work into two sections. Chair Dennison took the additions really to some of the later parts of the code. And then in reviewing the existing code, as well as updates from staff, there was a general conclusion by the subcommittee that we should actually work to restructure the code a little bit, not changing it in terms of its intent or narrative, other than the additions that were made, but to streamline it and organize it in a way that was much easier to read. So I think we generally accomplished those tasks. And then we, we obviously met with Senior Planner Wolf and went through those changes and had some additional discussion and dialogue about improving the, the proposed text. That's where we land today.
And with, with some of the additions that we were looking at, the overarching concepts that we were trying to introduce were for fire hardening, ministerial review. And then give some guidelines so that people understand why it is that that's happening or not happening. The obvious example is if you have shake siding and it runs vertical, and you come back and want horizontal hardy board, that's, or, sorry, horizontal cementitious product, I believe is what you called it in your presentation. That, that's an example of you're not just doing this for, for home hardening, right? And so the idea was to come up with an exhibit that you could point to and say, you know, closing in your rafters this way is better than closing in your rafters that way. Things like that, that would be really designated for home hardening so that you don't have to go get a report so that your house will be standing after the next fire. Part of that also included not referring people back, after the exception, to the regular demolition permit, which had a 30-day waiting period. So the way that this is set up now is if you get this exception and you get a ministerial approval, when you get that approval, you're ready to go. And that was one of the things we heard very loud and clear from the, from the city council. The, one of the things that they were, that was not in their top 10 hit list, but I think will, will serve everybody well, was to try to take a stab at figuring out how to not have to do a historical review on every post-war house. And the thing that we heard from city council was there are likely some amazing houses that are out there that will have, you know, mid-century modern looks to them. Outside of that, there may not be many architectural trends that are worthy of preserving. And so because there is no notification that's mandatory for a demolition permit, there was no trigger that allowed people to say, hey, I know this house, it's something that should be preserved. And so we went the opposite way and said, let's do a ministerial review of homes that are greater than 75 years old. And again, we'll give them the backup of a set of standards, you know, either here's what mid-century modern looks like, and that's a style that should be protected, and be able to update this from time to time, or say, here's what a non-mid-century modern looks like, and you've ticked every box, right? And so basically figuring out a way that is a little more common sense for people to be able to update their homes, rather than having to go through this process. And so it does put a little more of the onus onto the preservation department. I suspect these are going to be pretty easy decisions for the post, post-war boom houses. And as always, they have the option to refer it up to planning commission if they feel that's, or, I'm sorry. They don't refer to planning commission, they refer them to, they basically say you need a discretionary demolition permit. Clarify that point. By not getting a, by not being granted a ministerial review, if they want to continue, they would have to go through the full discretionary demolition permit, which would trigger one of these reports. So it's the same thing as referring it to the planning commission. It's just technically leveraging the existing process. That was, that was the goal of what we were trying to get to. And I thought it might be easier to kind of hear where we were trying to get before we discussed it, but.
Thank you for spending all that time on it.
Yeah.
I like the approach of putting something before the typical longer process and try to give as many people coverage, yeah.
Agreed. All right, should we take public comment and then discuss it? Perfect. At this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning this specific agendized item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes for a timely and orderly meeting. Hearing no comments, we'll bring it back for deliberation. And as Senior Planner Wolf is getting the text amendment up, I just wanted to say thank you so much to staff for all of their hard work on this. I know that Senior Planner Wolf put a ton of time trying to surgically insert all of this stuff in the beginning, and I felt really bad about reverting to a different style on it, but we, it was just so confusing that we thought that we were really going to go the other way. But again, he hopped on the phone with us and helped, so thank you very much. Really appreciated all your time on this. Absolutely. So I have the amendments on screen right now. One of the first things to consider, potentially one of the first things to consider is the term for potential historic resource, or currently reading as preservation candidate. I have highlighted in the first section, second section, and then wherever else the potential historic resource appeared, I also highlighted. Is that where we want to go, or Chair, would you like to lead where we start? Sure, so this is a great place to start. I think that potential historic resource was a defined term in this section or other sections? It's in, it's in chapter 17.82, the historic preservation. The historic preservation. And so the reason that we inserted preservation candidate is because we were trying to indicate you may not be to that point yet, but you need to be subject to this. And so that was the idea of using a term that wasn't exactly the same term. So I, I'm fine with either. It has a defined term in, in the chapter that Senior Planner Wolf mentioned, and so that's why we were kind of trying to create a different term. Not to get a whole bunch of definitions, just to kind of differentiate between the two. So I do recommend, if you like that term and that methodology, that we update all of the potential historic resources to preservation candidate.
Sort of like a category of pre-potential historic.
Exactly. Because if we, I was worried that if we define it as a potential historic resource, that it was going to be subject to all, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sure we're changing it to that, yeah.
Yeah, as long as they're all, as long as they all match.
Okay. Starting in the purpose of the discretionary demolition permit, I would ask the commission if that's where we want to change that, or if potential historic resources is appropriate in the context of the purpose. It sounds like you are recommending leaving it there? I don't have any recommendation either way, just bringing it up as a concern. I think that might be the one place it could.
I think, I think you could leave it, just because it, I think it reads more naturally there, and then the defined term is the defined term, and then after that, anywhere where it says potential historical resources is changed to preservation candidate, after the defined term. I would agree.
It's only in this one more spot, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So leave it, leave it as is in the purpose, but change it afterwards.
So leave it in the, yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
Were there any other concerns about any of the? Were there any other concerns about any of the definitions?
So, and I apologize, because I may have missed this on one of the edits, but in the definition of the preservation candidate says, or by way of historic resource appeal process, which is capitalized, which I believe should be a defined term possibly, but I, as I reread the new text, I didn't see that.
Yes. When we, this is a, this is a remnant, a relic.
Okay.
We should have a period after review. That entire new section.
Strike that, yeah.
That, that was when we were talking about setting up an appeals process.
Yes.
So.
Then that got removed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so after application for review, it should have a period, and that, we should strike through the end of that.
Okay.
And I took the fire hardening update from, I think it was CAL FIRE.
Oh, good.
And it looks like the, um, I saw, actually, it's not there yet. Anything else that people wanted to talk about on this page? All right, I guess next page?
Aplicability review?
The applicability review, we're going to update that potential historic resource to the preservation candidate. Any questions about any of that?
Would it help if I showed a cleaner version?
Probably.
I, that's what I'm reading.
Yeah, I think the cleaner version might be easier to look at, because we, we just move stuff around and, and put it in a different order, so.
This is nitpicky, but to get back to the definitions in other sections of our code, we have a term and then means, rather than is, and I would ask that we keep that consistent.
Okay. So you're recommending.
So for example.
Preservation candidate means a structure instead of.
Same as fire hardening.
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
We don't often get chances to get consistency, so thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah.
I would point out that in 2A and 2B, these were clarified a little bit in terms of the California Historic Resource Code, and essentially boiling down what the definition is to, you know, be significant from a national, state, or historical level. I think that's helpful.
When you get, when everybody's ready to move on, we can move on.
Yeah.
Application process is also new and a revision based, based on my suggestions, but revised from that. Simplified.
Any comments, concerns?
Super minor. Do we, like, 3 has a semicolon, 4 has a period, but 1 and 2 don't have punctuation. I mean, I think, I think we're supposed to have semicolons.
Then in the top line, after the following shall be included with the application, should be a.
A colon.
Yeah.
Yeah, colon, semicolons.
Yep.
Oh.
Oh, there's another.
[laughing] There we go.
Also want to let the commission know that any references to subsection letter or other kinds of references, we'll review it again once over before it goes to the city council for review.
Thank you. I did notice in the packet, there was a numbering change that didn't get conformed. We can assume you'll look at the punctuation as well and get that.
The only thing I noticed, I think on E, public notice and comment, the, the next sentence, there shouldn't be a paragraph there, it should start right after, right? Or like, that's how, or, or just make them the same, because if you go back up to C and D, that's how they're done.
Yeah. I think, I think.
I don't care which way it is.
ENF, I think that is the right way, actually.
This is the right way? Yeah, okay.
Well, I, to your point, it should be consistent, right?
It should be consistent, whatever it is.
It's always like, it's the, it's sort of a, it's the, it's the heading of the subsection, and then the paragraph is either before or not, right? So I think it's typically in our code is immediately after the subsection heading, meaning not on, on the next line, but.
Yeah, whatever.
Whatever's consistent.
I thought, I thought that was only when there's subsections. Like, if you scroll up, you'll see that in D, it starts immediately, but that's because there's D1, 2, 3, 4, 5, whereas E doesn't have any subsections to it, and so that's why it doesn't start immediately afterwards.
Oh, okay. If there's, if there's reason.
Why don't we trust staff to.
This is, this is just super minor, like, yeah.
Yeah.
Just make it consistent with everything else.
If there's no real reason not, you know, to put numbers in front of these paragraphs, I think this is preferred because it implies more that it applies all at once, rather than if it were numbered, potentially implying a sequence.
Oh, right, no, I, I think 2, 2 paragraphs is good.
We're just.
Yeah, but that part's good.
Just whether or not it starts first.
I, I think if it's in separate paragraphs, it's just a style choice. I don't think there's anything requiring it be all in one paragraph.
Right.
But I see where some, in some sections, I think one of the reasons is if it goes straight from the, like, title into the text, it only applies to one singular paragraph, and these have multiple, so therefore it's more of like a heading with following paragraphs. Does that make sense?
I just don't know what the consistency is throughout the code, right?
Yeah.
Well.
I was looking at other sections.
Right.
That I had printed out of other.
Right, because there's no subsections in ENF, so they don't do that.
It, it looks to be, it looks to be in other sections of the code where it's just a single paragraph, then it, then that single paragraph is immediately after the heading, if you will. If it's multiple paragraphs, then it's.
Right.
Then it's broken.
Broken down.
That's what I was trying to say.
I believe so, and I knew you did, but I believe that's the case.
Okay.
And certainly if there's, if there's multiple criteria or there's steps in a process, then it's broken out, it's not on the same line. The first paragraph is not on the same line.
Okay.
But consistency is.
All right, so are we ready to keep going?
Yeah.
Exceptions, this is a nice, big, meaty one.
Let me know if you want to go back to draft version.
Oh, super minor 2, again, it's just the same thing, what, 6? 1, 6, 7, 8.
So the visible from public view test, is it basically you're standing on the sidewalk and you're looking, is that, is it as dumb as that?
I don't know if we want to get as harebrained as, you know, if you're standing up on the mountain, can you see it from above?
Okay, you'd already updated 7 here. Perfect, thank you. In the draft that was circulated, it still said subsection L, but you got that, so thank you.
So in exception 10.
And 9.
In the middle, yeah, well, the, but in exception 10, the exceptions above needs to read 1 through 9, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
1 through 10.
Yep. Good catch.
And then, just from, for input from the commission on exception 9 here, it at one point referred to California State Historic Resource Code, I believe. I did change that because there's no reference in that, in any of those codes for architectural or cultural distinction. So my suggestion was to make this the architectural criterion as defined by the city.
Yeah, that, that's fine. And this is exactly a great point to stop for a minute. The risk in the way that we set this up is that it's easy architecturally to see significance of a home. This will do nothing to protect if Councilmember Goss used to live in this house, and it was a beautiful home, but it was just a standard post-war boom home, there would be no way to, to by default know that and protect it. So that is the one risk, and we should identify that for the council when we send this to them, but it seemed like the one thing that was just going to be too much to solve for in this. I can tell you from being on the commission for too many years, that there's a lot of instances of homes that have been rebuilt, and we insist on them having a little placard in front of them. Great example is the tea house on the, well, it was going to be a tea house. It's the decrepit building on the east side of Baldwin, above the, right below the art place.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's got a placard out front saying that the first surgeon in Sierra Madre lived there, or something, some famous doctor who lived here for 60, or worked practice here for 60 years. And the building has absolutely nothing to do with the, the placard. So I think that it's, it's the least risky part of what we were solving for, and so we had discussed it and just decided that that was, that was the risk that we would take on this. That's the, that's the one risk that, that sits out there that we should flag for, for city council when they see this. Unless you guys strongly object to it and want us to do something about it, I just, we just, we tried and tried and went back and forth and couldn't solve for everything.
Right.
All right, so after the exceptions, then we're on to H.
So this was a streamlining effort suggested by staff for the certificate of economic hardship process. And this is unchanged from what was reviewed on July 17th.
I, I thought it was fine.
Yeah, just.
We have semicolons again.
Yeah, the semicolons, it's, it's up in the one above it too, sorry. I can't not look at that now. It's in 11, I think it is, above it. That one's good.
Oh, oh, that one's a period.
All right, we'll trust staff to clean that.
Yeah.
Any objections to any of the edits proposed under H? All right. J, I don't think there were any changes, there was an update to a citation in J1A.
And J1C was deleted, it's no longer necessary to keep that in there.
Because it's one of the, we moved it from burden of proof on the applicant to be an exception.
That's correct.
And then the last part to review is really just K, the exception process for ministerial review. And the idea here, as I described earlier, was we will, we will try to come up, you guys probably haven't seen any of this yet, but we have a style guide, I'll call it, for, what's it called? One Carter. And in it, it has pictures like, here's a picture of a driveway that goes straight into the house, here's a picture of a driveway where it turns, and it's got an X over the one that goes straight in, and it, it has a nice picture of the one that has a curved driveway. So just think of that kind of an exhibit that has a couple of examples where we'll have a picture of a house that has vertical shake and then horizontal cementitious board, and, you know, that's not a good example, that's not a good replacement, right?
Chair, we're trying to stay away from pictures as much as we like them. We've received some recommendation from our building official to avoid that, as it might be construed as advertising for a certain product.
Okay. I can't wait to hear how you contextualize.
Even if you don't.
Horizontal cementitious product versus vertical shake siding.
Yes, pictures speak a thousand words, and a thousand words is not easy to read.
Fair enough.
Yeah. How many words is this?
So I guess from a practical standpoint, is that something that staff is going to be preparing as part of the submission for the city council if this goes before them? Do you need help from a subcommittee?
He reached out already. I've been ignoring him. I told him I would look at it, yeah.
Okay. Great. So we don't need to establish a subcommittee, you can reach out freely to a, a member of the commission to talk to them, right?
We've done so, and we're also recommending the planning commission take the opportunity on the next meeting of August 21st to review our draft exhibits.
And we have time, it's been noticed properly with the city council?
It will be noticed next week for a city council meeting on August 26th.
Okay, and we already noticed, because it's a 20-day period, right? So we already noticed the next planning commission meeting?
Tonight's meeting was already noticed, so if it's continued tonight, that will.
Oh, because it's continued?
Yes.
Perfect. That's why, no, never mind, go ahead.
I have a, I have a language suggestion. After rereading K1, so if you, if you read K1 and then it's A, B, C, D, it, it, I have a suggestion to clean it. So if you read that, the ministerial review may be approved by the director, that's fine. The ministerial review may be withheld approval with guidance. So my suggestion is, the ministerial review's the process, but the, the, it's the proposed demolition that's actually at stake here. So I had a minor wordsmithing suggestion to kind of make all this flow a little bit better. So at, here it is, as a result of the ministerial review, the proposed demolition may be, and then approved by the director could stay, then not approved would be B, and the applicant provided guidance as to changes, and then C and D would remain the same. So it's a, I don't know if we want to try that and subject that to discussion, but it, I think it reads better.
I'm sorry, can you tell me where to start?
I'll, 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 okay. So right there, as a result of the ministerial review, the proposed demolition, and then it would be, and then there's no change, maybe, and then approved by the director stays, and then B would be not approved.
Just not approved, sure.
Not approved, and the applicant provided, and then strike until guidance, strike withheld approval, so go, the next three words would be gone.
Looks good to me.
Is, should there be a word in front of changes? Needed?
As to.
Or something like that?
Recommended or needed.
Or recommended or something. Yeah, that's fine.
Needed sounds too definitive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Recommended sounds great. Do we need ors on, on those, or no? We have an or on C. Do we need an or on A and B? No? Okay.
Just, just C.
Okay.
This is also tiny detail. Is there a reason why director is capitalized in this section but nowhere else?
That's a good cleanup question.
Director should be capitalized.
I don't...
And unless you define it as a term in the definitions, I don't believe we need to.
It hurts everything in my soul.
It does feel weird.
Then should it be planning director, like it is an appeal?
We had a code amendment a couple of years ago which cleaned up a lot of where there's reference to director because at the time it said development services. And I believe we created a definition under the zoning code for what director means. And because it exists as a capital, because it's the beginning of a sentence, it might be unclear whether it should be used as a capitalized director or a generalized lowercase.
I would think it would be capital director def- defined somewhere. Or planning director.
Yeah, so...
Would need definition.
Let me ask a question. You're saying that the term director is defined in a different part of the code? So that that way, when we change from planning and preservation department director to preservation department director, even though it's the same person, that it's still applicable almost everywhere in the code, and we just have to change one definition?
That's correct.
So the other thing is that oftentimes, we don't capitalize definitions in the code. And so while it hurts me to say this, I think that conforming with the rest of the code, we're not supposed to capitalize this.
That's not great to me.
It took a lot to get me to say that publicly, I'll tell you that. Because I'm so used to defined terms having capitalization in them.
That's how you know they're a defined term.
Right.
If it makes you feel any better, there are some practices where unless it's defined at the beginning of that chapter, it isn't consistently capitalized. But I agree with you, it feels against intuition.
But it permeates our code, and nobody has been willing to say we should capitalize defined terms yet. I think because it would have to change the entire code.
Same with planning commission, I don't think we capitalize consistently.
But I know what the planning commission, it's not going to be Arcadia's planning commission.
Right.
But a director, director of public works, can they approve this? I mean, it's just director. If it's directors on...
Unless, so this is one section of the code, right? If at the beginning of the top of this code, director is defined, then it would carry out through all of the sections, right?
Well, should we define director then?
He's saying it is defined.
And somewhere else, in this code?
Under...
Definition.
So there's a general definitions that apply to all of the zoning code.
Okay.
And each chapter can define definitions on its own.
Okay, okay, so there's, okay.
So it's defined at the top of the code already?
Okay.
So we can use lowercase director.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. You got to swallow it.
Director means the director, lowercase, of planning for the city.
Okay, there you go.
So then do we have to say decision of the planning director?
Yeah, should we, maybe consistency then, because we have an appeal, we have a planning director.
So how about this? Since we're going to see all of this again, right, because we're going to go over the exhibits at that time, can we accept the code that we're discussing tonight, and then only redline against what we accept tonight? So that when you go through and change planning director, directors with a capital D, that we're only looking at those changes next time? Is that a fair ask?
That would be great.
Yeah, I'm just, when the subcommittee met, I noted that there's sections 1.04.030, 17.08, and 17.06.020 all show director capitalized means director of planning for the city. That's in the current code. So that we should just refer back to those sections and be consistent with the modifications we had here.
So just the director?
But there's plenty of other places in the code that have director not capitalized.
Right, that's what bothers me, because then it's, I don't know, I'm not the city attorney.
Just for my own satisfaction, I do have a running notes page of things that I take issue with in the code in case there was a rainy day that we wanted to just get crazy with it. So I will personally make a note of the capitalization of director.
Perfect.
Can you give me a heads up on when that's going to be?
You're going to be missed.
Make sure I...
You're out of town on the city.
Yes.
All right. Are there any other proposed changes to section K?
No.
All right. So then, I guess before the next meeting, you will phone a friend and work on getting the two exhibits for our review.
Sounds like they started it, though, so...
That's correct. Staff has started it. We're not just one person working on this, it's multiple. And we're working in tandem with our building official as well.
That's great. I think that'll be really helpful. And we're not trying to pull the pin on a hand grenade and throw this back to the planning department, right? So the idea is that these exhibits give you the ability to say repeatedly to applicants, this is why it works, this is why it doesn't work, right? This is not you, this is the code. And so that's, hopefully that will be a way to defer some of that. Because I understand the concern of being the one who makes those decisions at a ministerial level, but...
Right, and then the intent is that if there are any new materials that are developed, that we can add those onto the list, that they're appropriate or not appropriate.
I think the greatest example of that is the code that we changed for uses, right, for zoning. At, you know, glazing shops are going to go away, rabbit processing, we got rid of that one, right? But as things change, we should be able to update the code without having it come to the commission or to the council every time, so I think it's a good tool. All right, so I guess I will entertain a motion to continue this to the planning commission meeting of August 21.
Make a motion to continue this matter to a day certain, what is it, August?
August 21.
21st.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously? Thank you. Thank you, staff, for all that great work.
Good job, good job, committee.
Thank you.
All right, next up, planning commission reports. Any reports? Planning and community preservation department reports.
Just the next item would be continue of the municipal text amendment.
Do you have an announcement? Give me one second to pull that up.
Oh, I'm not sure I like this.
So there was a citywide architectural survey that began on July 28. It's being conducted in coordination with the U.S. Department of Interior and the National Park Service with the city of Sierra Madre. This is being offered to us in the wake of the infire, and its purpose, it's being provided at no cost to the city, and it's an information gathering effort. Its purpose is to better understand the community's architectural character and history, and it can be used as a guiding future development and preservation efforts. It can be used to potentially find places that may qualify on the national register, and nothing is being formally designated through this effort. The information could be of value to property owners who wish to preserve the historic qualities of their home. That effort started on July 28, and we have been notified as of today that it would be concluded by today, but that there might be some efforts to come back to just fill in some gaps that they might have missed.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you guys posted that on the Facebook page, because I did see that there were people who were concerned about it. I saw them walking around town. And interestingly enough, this, when you have this report, it could be incorporated into your decision-making process for these ministerial reviews. That was actually one of the things that a former planning chair recommended to me was if we had a survey, that would be another tool in your quiver. So that's great news. Thank you.
Lovely work.
Right, thank you. Hearing nothing else, we'll adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting of August 21.